United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for coming to our September fourth, 7:00 P. M. Meeting. Let's see, we were expecting legislator Stiganga, so we'll bypass that at the moment. It's in regards to a grant that we had applied for, for $4,999, which she was gonna hopefully be here for a presentation. Moving on then, at this point, any public comment on the agenda? Yes, sir.
Sean Hagerty for Belvoir, right? And here it says $309,000 for deficit funding. On your letter, it says to pay down interest. Is it paying principal and interest, or just? What is it paying?
It will pay, it will pay the principal in their letter or an email that I just received, and I have to, I want to reread it, but it said it's good for principal, but they, well, let's put, let me back up. This money, we need to check with Senator Scoofus's office and how we receive that money. The money that we get from EFC, in their email, it said that the dollars could be used for principal, but it's not, does not include interest. They can't use that money for interest. So, that's, that 309 is money that, again, will be coming our way so that we can use that money for the deficit spending on the ban.
So that's for the ban?
Yes.
So are those, this letter and this, two different things?
No, it's kind, it's all wrapped into one, and at the end of the day.
EFC, that just says dispersment of final numbers. Does it have any?
Well, the dispersment of final numbers is, it's on the agenda, so when we, at our last meeting, we were talking about an additional $442,441.42 that was left to be dispersed. Prior to that, it, we had received, through all the meetings and discussions we've had with EFC, we had received $597,824.25 according to EFC. So, we received that 597, right? And the remaining balance was 442,441.42 cents. At the last meeting, I mentioned that there was still a lot of documentation, information that was still missing for what we would, in order to try to capture this 442. But EFC, we had high-level management meetings with them, and they felt because of our, all the work that's been done over a year and a half trying to get this money back, they said if you could just give us something to show that this information and stuff was paid, then we'd move forward. So we ended up doing that. We ended up getting checks and whatnot. We couldn't find the paperwork that was supposed to be submitted. We couldn't do any of that. We couldn't find the invoices, but we found checks. And the checks didn't have anything associated to the invoice number, so it was like, you know, somewhat of a shot in the dark, but EFC was very good with us in knowing that, again, we had done our due diligence. So they are reimbursing us for that 442, 441.42 cents. And that amount will be applied, and it's here, it says that they'll apply the $344,115 of that entire amount to the village on 10/1 of this year for a principal payment. And then they mentioned the additional $98,326.42 that will also, and I, and I need to follow up on this because they say it's gonna come October 1st, 2024. In the conversations, it sounded like that 98 would be coming in '25, and I just need to confirm that. So either way, that money will be coming. So we did, over the year and a half, as we sat here, and it was $1,040,000, and we have recaptured the $1,040,000, which will go towards the deficit. And we're still working through the audits. We're through, I believe, almost 2023, and we're just waiting for PKF, our auditors, to get their ducks in a row, and BST, who is doing all the data gathering and doing the reporting for New York State, along with Leslie. And once that's all said and done, then there'll be some reports, and we'll post those reports when we get them, the financial and the management reports. The last year will probably be a deeper dive, a little bit more stringent, I'll call it, because we went live with our financial system in, I believe it was May, right? End of April, May. So, from May to, you know, current is when they're gonna, by the time we get into next year's budget, they'll be taking a deep dive in the '24 data because, again, we're on the computer system and we have the data on the system that they'll review. When that's all said and done, then there'll be a final review, as we've been told, by the state of New York and a deficit audit to evaluate the numbers that the auditors have presented and see where that number lands as far as what they feel is the true deficit number. Because, again, we borrowed the 4.4, and they'll tell us, you know, were we closer to 2.4, or at the end of the day, what we're going to pay back to New York State. And with the balance ends up being, we will have this $1 million that we can use, the $309,000 that we received from Senator Scoofus, and we'll also be able to use the money that was allocated out of our '23, '24 budget, I'm sorry, the '24, '25 budget of that tax, when we got your tax bill, part of that money was for the deficit payment. And so that'll also be used. So we're hoping, depending on how the numbers obviously shake out, we'll hopefully not owe that much. And there's, at least, I don't know the exact number, but it was close to $2 million that was still in the bank, still collecting interest, and we're trying to stay away from that, so we don't need to touch it. The only, the only reason we would be touching it would be contracts, with, say, like the police or DPW, because there was no money that we saw in this current budget that was set up for contracts, and some of these contracts are retro. And there's no, so contract, say, ends in April.
Yeah, how far out of contract are they? Almost a little more settled last year?
No, no, no. We, we, we did part-time police, we did DPW, the full-timers, we feel were really close, and that expired prior to February?
February 28th.
February 28th. So that, that is still open. So there was no money set aside for that, so that money would probably come out of deficit when we get done talking to the bond people and finance people. So we're doing it in the right, right order. So that's, that's what that's all about.
All right. Something else on here, the roof you're doing. Are you doing the rubber roof, or are you doing the cross roof?
We're looking at the rubber roof, because it, everybody that's looked at it so far, we've had three companies, we've received two bids, waiting on the third, and I don't want to mention the numbers because I don't want, the third company hasn't submitted yet. All of them said that the roof, the roofing structure itself is in really good shape. It's concrete, thick slab, so they all presented their numbers to do the roof, to replace it, you know, pull off everything that's there and put a process in to replace it. So, the first numbers came in, we sent that off to the engineer, he said it looks good as far as what they're proposing. We're gonna get a 20-year warranty on the roof to repair anything that's going on. The second one that came in, pretty much the same thing, rip it and replace it with a rubber roof and insulation and everything else. So we just actually received that today. And that's now being reviewed, sent that up to the engineer to be reviewed as well. Okay? Yeah, we'll keep you updated on that. Anything else, anybody? Paul?
Yes, Paul, I, could you answer the question? Is that, like I said, in a letter, it says aid, and then it says deficit funding on it?
Well, it's aid that we received from the Senate side of the House, so it's, they described it as aid. We were just using some of their words, but the basis of that 309,000 is to pay off and help pay off the principal debt of the deficit funding. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, if not, then we'll just move on. I pretty much went over number one, which was the EFC, that's the dispersment of the final numbers. We went over number two, which was Scoofus, Senator Scoofus's, deficit funding of the 309. Tree planting on Avron Boulevard, we're gonna start that project back up now that summer's coming to an end, and tree planting season is going to come our way. And so we'll re-advertise it. We've had a number of applications already, we expect some more. And depending on what we have, our, our plan is to do the plantings on October 19th around 9:30, have the holes kind of pre-drilled, have the trees delivered potentially on Friday. And the family members that are buying the trees can, you know, basically plant them, cover them, and we'll do an inventory of the trees because the next thing we will want to do, and we've received some, but again, it, you know, kind of went to the back burner during the summer months, is a plaque system that's on a rod that would be in front of the tree and whatever you wanted it to say. There were a couple of different styles, which was a couple of different prices, so it would be completely up to the family of what they want to put in. So that's where we're on with that. Paving work at EJ McBlock when we were doing some maintenance over there with the lighting that we described, we, there was a tree that was growing against, I guess it was the Orange County Old Post Building, so that rework has been done. We still need to take care of the stump that's there. There's a gas line going down the road, so we have to be very careful, probably grinding that stump out of there and then putting in some new plants and things like that. Paving-wise, we're gonna, the attempt is to, there'll be an in-house job with the town. Our guys are going to peel up maybe the first level, inch or two of, because there's multiple layers there. So the whole idea is to scrape up the first level, bring it down below the curb cuts where it makes sense. And then with the town and our village GPW, we're going to repave that area. So we're trying to shoot for mid, excuse me, mid-September, if that works out. Linkage drive sidewalks curbing are just about done, if not already. So our paving will be scheduled, we need to finish up doing some binder work on the new curbs that were installed on the newer section. The older section drainage has been done. We're putting down, like I said, the first layer of kind of asphalt binder to, you know, fill in the gaps where there was stone and work was done. And then when the new, when the company comes in to do the paving ward, they'll recommit the whole thing and then re, and just pave for the plan. So we hope to get that done in September, and right now, everything, we haven't heard anything, right, Chris, from contacts? Okay.
I have a second question. What do they do when they grind it up? What do they do with that?
What do they do with it? It stays there, in most cases, depending on how much they're grinding and what they can take, and then...
A lot of times, they take it away.
Depending on how much is there, and if I remember correctly, right, Chris, the, they'll recommit, but nothing's coming off the site? Or are they gonna be removing any recreation?
They'll mill two inches off and then put back two inches.
Okay. But are they gonna be taking anything off-site?
Whatever they mill off.
They will take the mills, okay.
Is, we have no use for something like that, that drains, you could use that as paths? You go look, look up, buy it, $60 a yard.
Yeah.
So you're giving away a lot of stuff, whereas if you need, I don't know if you're gonna do anything with the path from the dog park out to Newcastle?
Yeah. The only thing we have to be concerned about is asphalt and the oil in it, and it's environmental, you know, kind of, but if we have another road that we need...
DPW, you know what they told me?
Who's that?
DPW, Sam one of the calls. As long as you're not putting it in the water, there's nothing wrong.
Yeah.
Because if you put it in the water, you're contaminating the water.
Sure.
If there's a problem with the asphalt, we'd have to rip up all the streets in the country.
No, no, I get it, but just booking in general.
Rather than paying somebody to take away or sell it on their own.
No, we, you know, we can use it for other roads, other roads that have deteriorated enough where there's not enough binder on it. They can use that, and then sometimes they come in with that, the wool, and they'll put calcium chloride on it, which sets it, makes it as strong as concrete. So, and then they'll pave it right on top of that.
We shouldn't be giving it away without receiving.
No, I don't, we're not giving it away.
Okay.
Yeah, we're holding it, yeah. Okay, let's see, we did the roof. You know, just a message, obviously, school started today, but for everybody, you know, out there, let's just keep our eyes and ears open with the children walking across streets. We don't want any, obviously, disasters, so let's just drive through our neighborhoods for the speed limits, and let's just pay attention to our children, especially around the bus stops, and when buses are stopping that we don't run the flashing red lights. It's obviously really important about that. Okay. Green County Bank, we had received a grant funding of $500. That was approved by the bank maybe a month or two ago. We just received a check for 500 bucks, and we're gonna be using that money to purchase the second school crossing signal light up at Taff School, and it's solar, so we'll be saving just under $4 a month on electric. So, but that'll be good, and I know that's on Chris's project list at the moment, but we need to, we have a couple of, obviously, summertime projects that we really need to get done. So we thank Green County Bank for accepting our application and approving it for $500. Just a note for tomorrow, we're supposed to have our comprehensive plan zoning meeting that's gonna be canceled until the following Thursday, which I believe is 12, at the same time, it's 6:30, so everyone's aware of that, and we posted it. I'm not sure if we created a flyer yet, but we need to get it on social media, so everyone is aware of that. And just a reminder, for September 11th ceremony with the fire department is gonna happen, obviously, at the Memorial Park at 7:30 P. M. It will, it will take place, so if you can please attend and support your community and the firefighters, the firefighters, five firefighters that gave their lives that day, along with many other civilians and other firemen, police officers, and emergency rescue people, would be greatly appreciated to come out and support everyone after 20 years already. Let's see. What isn't on here, but I think we'll just talk about it real quick, is the, we call it Code Red, this is our CTY system that we currently receive messages from the Village Hall. This new Code Red system, I don't know if you feel like giving an update on it, probably not. So, what Code Red is, it's just an updated version of CTY with lots of more bells and whistles, and it's gonna be easier to use. There are detailed training is gonna happen in a couple of weeks. The system is installed, it's usable right now. We have everybody that was in the old CTY system has been moved over to this Code Red system. The nice thing about this is besides getting emails, and you can still get phone calls, now you can get text messages to your phone, which we think is huge because when you're out during the day doing your thing, no one's really checking, you know, emails per se. So if there is a real reason to reach out, you know, expect text messages and so forth, and we're gonna test that system when we get our training in a week or two, and we'll just send out a test message to make sure it's working correctly. Anything else you'd do on that, or is that, it's pretty much charming. Okay.
An app that needs to be downloaded, correct?
Well, that's correct.
It doesn't have the download function.
Well, if you weren't using it.
No, you don't have to have the app. It'll still be the text message, or phone call, email, but the app is out.
Yeah, because your phone number's in the system, so it'll send it out via that. It'll also give us some posting capability to social, social media as well.
Will we still have Christine's voice on the message?
No.
No, I hate to say it.
Well, not, not right away.
Yeah. Maybe, maybe we'll, everybody always says we love her voice, so...
Voiceover artist, we can add it to your resume?
Okay. All right, let's see, anything else? Also, not on the agenda, just to mention it, is that this coming Sunday, there'll be a car show down at Burn Allen Park from 9:00 A. M. to 2:00 P. M. The portion of the road will be shut down between Revere and Capitol, I'm sorry, Decker, and there'll be some food trucks in there, and, you know, obviously, it's a car show, so if you're, you're welcome to come down and, you know, look at the cars and have a good day, hopefully it's gonna be a nice day. So just, you know, what time you closing the road, chief?
I think 8:30.
8:30, okay.
Roughly 8:30, whatever the food trucks start getting there.
Yeah, so we'll do a CTY message, or maybe we can test the, test the Code Red as our kickoff and see how that runs. Okay, that'd be great. Thank you, chief. Okay. With that, then, resolutions, 240135 to approve McGowan-Housner and Etzel proposal for storm border management, MS4, engineer reporting on an annual basis, and of course, not to exceed $17,000 annually. Have a motion? Motion. Have a second, please?
Second.
Questions, comments? Woman in favor? Resolution 240136 to approve a facility use request, storm for the Girl Scouts of Washington Building Service Unit 225 for the hero walk and breakfast to be held on Saturday, September 7th, from 9:30 A. M. to 12:30 P. M. at Burn Allen Park. My new walk begins at 10:30. A motion, please?
Motion.
Any questions, comments? Woman in favor?
Who was the second on that?
Steve.
Steve, okay.
Hey, Chris? Next is resolution 240137 to authorize the approval of the purchase of a 2022 Dodge Durango Police Package Vehicle from Joe Sione Chrysler Complex in the amount of $37,375.12, matching the New York State Mini Bid Number 11297 price. Said vehicle replaced the 2016 police vehicle that has a bad transmission. Have a motion?
Motion.
Steve, you have a second?
Second.
How many miles are they?
Is it used?
Yes.
Huh?
How many miles are they?
None. Oh, one that's going out?
No, the one we gave.
No, 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 it's brand new.
2022?
25 miles, I thought.
They've been holding it for us for a while.
Yeah, I mean, it's brand new, and we didn't buy it used, it's coming right from the dealer. But Brian, I don't know if you want to add?
Say that we were trying to purchase this car in 2022, but because of financial issues, we held off. They actually held it for us.
They sat on it?
They, it came from Niagara Falls, but it got delivered to Walthamders. The mechanic and I looked at it about three weeks ago, the spot list has got 45 miles on it. We looked at the brakes, looked at everything, it was garage-kept. The other thing is the warranties don't start until we actually purchase the vehicle, so the three-year, five-years don't start until that's...
Thank you, man. So, let's see, I had a motion from Steve, a second from Brian, for any conversation on the desk? If you want to.
It's gonna be used, SRO money?
Yeah, portion, portion of the money is, is coming from the SRO money. A portion of that, those dollars have been budgeted since, I think, 2018, or if you want to add to this, Brian, clarity?
Yeah, just so, I'm not sure Paul was on the board at the time, but when we build a school district, when we first started the SRO program, Buckel wanted us to charge the schools $30 a day for the car to park at the school. So it was $90 a day each day. When Dr. Washington came in, he didn't, he didn't like that budget, bill, so he asked us just to put that into the hourly rate, which we did. So, there's some visual money for a car. We haven't bought a car since 2021, so that money's hopefully been, you know, it's been there, it has, just hasn't been used for the right purpose, so there is money in there for, for the purchase of it. That money continues on, you know, like right now, today, we build them, you know, we're billing them about, all the time, at $64 an hour, and that includes salary, tuition benefits, and, and money for billing them a car.
Thank you, Brian, thank you. Any other questions on the desk? Okay. If not, then, woman in favor?
Hi.
I'm staying.
Let's see, that concludes that portion of our agenda. Public comment? Yes, sir.
Do we still need to do the budget transfers?
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Resolution 240138 to authorize the budget transfers and amendments as necessary to effect the necessary transfers of funds to pay warrants. Have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Questions, comments? Woman in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Chris, appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Okay, public comment? Yes?
Any input for our court, the attorney? Any update on the village inspector that's on leave? While you're looking at it?
Not yet. The process is ongoing.
Trial me?
There are two, without getting into too much detail, there are two separate proceedings. One of those proceedings has concluded, we're just waiting for a report from, the report. And depending on the outcome of the report, moving forward.
Is he still unpaid? Probably not. Has he always been unpaid?
I believe he's back on the payroll, uh, he's not, he's not, he's not back on the payroll, okay. There you go.
Or is no comment that he's unpaid? Or that we're saying?
Generally, what happens is, and I, I can't say it'll be the same in this case, is that they remain off the payroll, and there is inevitably litigation afterwards, and they seek to recover money that they claim they're owed for being off-pay when they should be on-pay. That happens frequently in the cases.
Thank you.
Second, any update on irrigation?
We have it for attorney review. It is a large piece of legislation that needs to be reviewed. It's not just irrigation, it is literally rewriting the entire water portion of our village code, from meter installation to who's responsible for what, or charging hookups and stuff like that. So, yes, it's been a lengthy process, and we need the attorneys to put it together so we can go over it one more time.
Will it be a public hearing, or you guys just have a resolution?
We can't make it all go low without a public hearing. We want to have the package nice and tidy to... We want to have the package nice and tidy to present to you before we do the public hearings.
Good.
Any other questions? Paul?
Paul Hines, sacred link, status of the wells?
Status of the wells? The...
Water wells.
The water wells. They were, last was twenty-four feet, nine inches?
Still?
Still. Anyway, and they, they went up, we're actually graph, they do graph it, and so I've asked for the graph, so on a monthly basis, I'll probably just print that out and have it available for anybody who wants to, or at least to the rain, and, and, you know, see the numbers of rain go up, and then you can see what follows is the well level rises, as we were discussing.
And the, the second part is the, again, a still, since I come by all the time, that gate down at DPW, it was open on, on my way down here tonight, might be somebody there, I don't know, but six forty-five in the morning on Saturday, the twenty-fourth, it was open.
What time?
Six forty-five in the morning on Saturday, but there were two trucks there. Do we, have you given them, I didn't consider authorized personnel? Do they have a key to that gate?
Well, they...
The trucking company.
I'm sorry?
The trucking company.
Yeah.
Do they have a key to the gate?
I don't believe so. It's a combination.
All right, well, it was open on, it was open on the twenty-fourth, Saturday morning, at six forty-five, Labor Day, there were two trucks in there at eleven twenty-nine, and it was open.
Yeah, I mean, they're running, you know, trucks, you know, early in the morning, in some cases, like...
But they have to get in to turn around, that's, I'm curious, how do they get in? We, we, it's certainly where they can, we, we can sell them water, but it has to be when normal business hours, our normal business hours.
Well, we're not there on weekends.
They have to be opening up their gate to get the, the fifty-three foot trailer.
Except for checking, going in, doing check, you know, our walkthrough checks.
Well, an outside company is allowed to go in there and pull water, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
How is that okay?
Why isn't it okay?
It's our water, and we're charging for the water.
We're charging in for the water, Brian.
And there's no accountability on, I don't know where he goes.
You don't even know who's driving trucks?
I, I don't know, how is that okay?
Well, it's spinler trucks.
Regardless who it is.
Okay. So...
So somebody outside the DPW or the water department has access to that plant without us being there. How is that okay? Explain to me how that was, that, that just blows my mind, yeah.
Okay.
Wow.
Sorry, it blows your mind, but...
But then you say that's okay, that's a problem. I'm sorry, that's the wrong answer.
It's all right, in, in your mind, that might be a problem.
That's the wrong answer. Outside company goes into our water plant, our water treatment plant.
To get to the hydrant, to get to the hydrant, to fill the truck.
Okay, they can fill it when, during business hours, when our employees are there, modern.
They don't work on weekends.
So then he doesn't fill up water on weekend. I mean, it's that, it's that simple.
Yeah.
You're allowing an outside company to come in. That's like saying, you know what? I'm going to go to F and J's on my own time, walk in there, make a pizza, and walk out. How is that different? That's crazy.
Well, if Frank knew you, if May Frank knew you, and you were going to go and make some water, maybe he'd say that's okay to do.
Does Spindler work in the village of Washingtonville?
I'm sorry?
He shouldn't have access to the water plant. That, that's wrong, that's wrong. I'm sorry. With everything that's going on in the world, people should not have access, employees only. I'm sorry. Absolutely not.
Well...
Benny, can I just ask, is your concern the sewer plant, or is it concerned...
Sewer, water, everything. They shouldn't have access to village property. It is a locked gate there for a reason, so why not just leave it open for everybody?
I'm just trying to understand...
Why close it if he's got access to it?
I'm just trying to understand what your specific concern is.
He's not a village employee. We're selling water as a business to him, but nobody's there to sell it to him, he's just taking it as he pleases whenever he wants. So he has access to that gate. He has a combination, obviously. Who knows? Did we vet him? Does he have a background check? Did he give the combination to somebody else? How do we know who's going in there? We're not monitoring who's going in there because he just has a combo and goes whenever he wants, and nobody's there.
All right.
We need to track what's coming in and out of there at all times.
All right.
Who's logging it? Who's logging the gallons? He's logging it, so we're going on the trust back there. That, that's, that's unacceptable, unacceptable, absolutely not.
Benny, it's a good point, and you're part of the conversation.
It's, it's, I, whatever. Tom thinks it's okay though, it's all right.
It's all right. I, I appreciate the comment.
There's more than one truck, to his point, there's more than one truck, so, there's more than one driver.
That's, of course.
That's unacceptable. So they're not all simple.
Guys, this isn't, this isn't anything that just fell off the, off the train last night.
I understand, but it's not all...
This has been going on for years.
It's not all simple.
So it was all, it was fine years ago, and, okay, so now, now it's, now it's a particular issue or question or problem, and we'll, we'll address it.
Has they been pumping water out of there for years, or just recently, since Spindler shut his shop up over there?
Well, since twenty-twenty. That's when I think they were sold. So...
And he's been pumping water since then? He's been pumping water out of there since then?
It's my understanding, yeah.
Free, free rain, that's not right. After nine eleven, these gates around everything, your pump houses, you have to put fences around, you have locks on them.
Chris?
Pat Mitchell at Ten York Place. We, what Benny is telling you about is risk management techniques for that class of business. Every area has that, every, every particular occupation. You will find out from your insurance carrier why you need to do that. Anybody can get in there. They can contaminate something. There is no insurance coverage for that. They can contaminate all of Washingtonville, and we're all dead.
Okay. We'll check into it.
Sean Hay, your last question. Well, I've asked multiple questions that I've never received an answer for. The last time you said you were going to go back to the water company and find out how they bill us per hour. So I'm looking for that still. I'm not, I don't care about what you, they charge you to paint, I don't care about that. I'm asking about water meter reading. That was the original question, all in, just like you had a piece of a restaurant, I think, there one time, Tom? You, you charge for the salt, the pepper, the ketchup, the mustard, the napkins, everything gets added in. That's all in. The other one is pickleball courts. Are you still moving forward with three more pickleball courts with the town building six?
Yeah.
I've spoken to people, and I said that the season is going to go slow down, and there's no need for three.
Well, the season is probably going to slow down because the rule is back in session.
Right.
But I had three people last weekend ask me, when are, are we going to be able to build three more, or more courts?
Have you told them that the town's building six?
Yeah, and they say, over there. Like, why am I going to go there?
How do they get over here? How do they get in there? By car?
I don't know, but it's more convenient, like everything else, location, location, location. If they live in, in the village and they want to just come down to Burn Allen Park and use it, they do.
So what about kids that learn to ride their bikes over there, or skate roller blade, or whatever they're doing? Where are they going to go? In the parking lot? Is it by the cars?
I hope not.
Well, so do I, but, you know, like you're taking away the last free open place.
Around, around this is a path.
I ride my bike around it, you know?
Okay, so that path would be available to, to, for the kids to ride around the outside of the fence, to ride their bikes and do what they need to do.
Okay. What about skateboard park? Have you made any influence on that, or is that going to be basketball?
Well, we do have some numbers from a company that we ran into, or they ran into us, and I'm not quite sure what direction it was going in, but we have numbers.
We have proposals.
Good. I might have to hear that.
I know nothing about skateboarding, so if you'd like to pitch in and explain some of this to me, I am welcome to listen.
I wouldn't know what they, how to price the equipment.
So this is just one company.
They give it to you, they give it to you in different size, you know, dimensions of the area, and then they recommend certain equipment, like half pipes and other pieces of equipment.
So you said you were talking to a young man about this at one point, why don't you